I'd like to call this meeting of the Templeton Advisory Committee to order. The Templeton Advisory Committee Regular Business is being broadcast live on TCTV Channel 8 and the TCTV YouTube channel. Responses will be made to comments made in the TCTV YouTube channel as time permits. The agenda and meeting materials for this business meeting are posted to mytowngovernment.org/01468, no later than forty-eight hours prior to the scheduled meeting in accordance with Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws. The Chair reserves the right to add items to, remove items from, or change the order of the agenda. However, the agenda is posted in advance to give the committee and public time to review the agenda items and to ensure that the meeting runs within the allotted timeframe. I would like to welcome all of you here, in particular, town and school officials. The pre-town meeting in my mind is the most important task that we perform as a committee. The purpose of the pre-town meeting is to gather facts and listen to the reasons for or against the various warrant articles. Then at the end of the meeting, the advisory committee will vote on a recommendation for each of the warrant articles, with the exception of the citizen petitions, which while we will gather facts, we will not make these specific recommendations because the petitions are from the citizens at large. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up to public... Oh, I'm sorry. This time, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're back at it.
I know. At this time, I would like to open the meeting for public comments. That's the first item on the agenda. Is there any member of the public present who wishes to make public comments at this time?
I wanted to speak on the floor, but do you want to wait till that comes up?
Yeah, we'll wait till that comes up. Okay, there are being... It appears that there are none. At this time, Dr. Kazivan asked that we take up the new fire code, which I believe is... Oh, we have to open it.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion.
I'm old and losing it.
I'd like to make a motion to open pre-town meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Beth.
Yes.
We vote?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Hopefully, it's not too spiced, I'm out, and I'm out. So, in any event, out of deference to Dr. Kazivan, I would like to consider Article 7, which is the Narragansett Regional School District, the school roof article. And yes, if you could read it, I would appreciate that.
So, Article 7 is the Narragansett Roof Repair Debt Exclusion to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $12,886,811 in no sense for the purpose of roof rehabilitation of Narragansett Middle School, including all incidental and related expenses, and to meet said appropriation to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such sum and, consistent with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or any other source of authority, said amount contingent upon passage of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion ballot question in accordance with Mass. General Law, Section 59, Section 21(c), and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that any federal, state, or grants awarded prior to issuance of bonds will be used to reduce the amount borrowed by the town of Templeton. Submitted by the select board, two-thirds vote required.
At this time, Dr. Kazivan and Anthony, if you'd like to come forward. Appreciate that.
We appreciate that you're squeezing this in first. We do... First off, right off the bat, I just wanted to make sure that I say that the language of the... that you just read is... When I say incorrect, it's incorrect. But we knew that going in. We knew why, because when we first... when we were talking with the town, the select board, there was a very tight window of time that had to... a warrant article needed to be, you know, created. And so, it really, for lack of a better word, was a place marker because we had yet to receive, honestly, all of the information from the schematic design and the folks that, you know, were looking at the roof. So, I want to make sure that I say that out loud. So, the number that you read, the twelve million and change, which is a lot of money, it's only ten million, actually, I say only. But the actual amount is $10,864,548. We fully plan to make an amendment on the floor. That was always part of the plan because we knew that this was going to happen. We knew. Jeff, when he came over to talk about the, you know, just in general, what was taking, you know, taking place, he knew that the number was going to be... was going to change, and so, we knew that. The other part I want to make sure that I point out before, again, we get into all of this, is that the school district, the towns, will be voting to allow the school to take on the debt. Because I believe what I just... I believe that the language you just read says that the town of Templeton would be taking on. That's not the case, right? So...
You just got lucky.
What's that?
You just got lucky.
I know. Honestly, I was looking, and I knew, I've seen this look before, so I wanted to quickly get to this part before we went into the actual numbers. So, what this is, is that the... both towns would be voting for the school to take on the actual debt. And then, and again, now, we're going to get into kind of the brass tacks of the matter, but I'll pause before I get into the specifics, but I just want to make sure I make those two things very abundantly clear, you know, before we get started.
So, you're going to have a substitute motion?
Yeah.
That has all the right verbiage?
Yeah.
That... Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be... It's already written out. It's... We understand the rules. We... It's already written out with the correct... obviously, the correct number and the fact that you'd be authorizing the district to borrow X.
Yeah, so I just want to make one thing clear. This is really for the public at large.
Sure, yeah.
That this Article 7 on the warrant, as presented, is really kind of a placeholder language prior to the actual action of the school building authority to approve the regional school district's application for grant monies.
The way that they... with it, the timing all took place. And we're very thankful for the select board to just understand what was going on because we can't move the MSBA any faster than they'll allow you to move. So, this was really just the placeholder. So, I want to say that again, but that's absolutely correct. Okay. So, we can get right to the narrative, which kind of falls in line now to what we were, you know, what we've been talking about. So, you know, as folks know that in February, you know, we submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA. They came out, they looked at the roof in August. I think there were over a hundred and... it was a hundred and fifty applications. Ninety-three were selected, we were one of them, or something to that effect. But there was ninety-three accelerated repair projects accepted. So, in going through that, we've gone through the process to what has... where we are right now. So, we've gone through the schematic design, they went up, they inspected the roof. We've presented the report to both select boards to say, "Look, we have thirty-six areas on the roof that are currently leaking. The entire... It'll require the entire high school side of the roof to be replaced. A portion of the middle school will be replaced. There is, I would say, substantial, you know, issues with some of the brickwork. The... I'm trying to think of the...
Flashing.
Thank you. The flashing was incorrectly put on many years ago. So, water, instead of repelling water, it actually was inviting it in.
That went over real big, by the way.
I'm sorry?
That went over real big.
Yeah, yeah.
And nicked this stuff up.
I know.
But it is what it is.
Right. And but the good news is, and there is, there's good news, that there is no... There's no mold, there's none of that type of... and that's one of the checks, of course. The structural damage, and again, when we came with our owner, project manager, he was very quick to say, is that, "No, there is no structural damage to the beams." But over a year, if it continues, of course, then it could then become a structural issue, which of course is a much bigger thing. So, in all... So, there we are. And so, again, initially, the project was at twelve million, you know, and some odd. But during the review, the solar panels... So, it is MSBA requirement that any type of roof that they're going to put money into has got to be solar-ready. There is no way around it. We have... That was one of the questions that came up yesterday at the chair's meeting. We have that information from the OPM where, in essence, the MSBA is like, "No, you will have your roof solar-ready." But what we did is we took the solar panels off the bill, so to speak, because, one, it was like two million dollars and some change, more than that, and they're not part of the MSBA reimbursement. So, they're not even reimbursable. So, which, again, we'll figure that out later on down the road, quite frankly. But the building, or the roof, I should say, will be solar-ready for whenever that opportunity should present itself.
Excuse me, Dr. Kazivan. Is the... making the building, the roof solar-ready, is that reimbursable, that part?
Yes. That part is, the solar panels are not. And so, yeah, so we've... When... Once we... And we have a great OPM who really dug into this, and so, we were happy to... Well, again, we're happy to take it off of the total cost because it's just not something that we were, you know... Again, we're trying to get... We're trying to get the roof fixed. You know, we'll worry about those things later. But, you know, so the adjustment reduced the project cost from this twelve million to the ten million eight sixty-four five forty-eight, resulting in a cost savings around a little over two million dollars. So, how does that break down? The MSBA treats this as two separate projects. You know, this is what's really been frustrating. Although we're one contiguous building, they really count this as two projects. We think because the high school roof has to be completely replaced, whereas the middle school roof is just going to have some work done, so to speak, because not all of the portions of the middle school roof is older than twenty-six...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years old, because we had some work done, I think, in 2011-ish. So, those sections didn't meet the age requirement. So, it's a partial on the middle school side and a complete, you know, replacement on the high school side. So, it breaks down to that the high school cost is nine million one hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars, and the middle school side of things is one million six hundred and eighty-eight two thirty-four. So, luckily enough, on October 29th, the MSBA approved the project with a reimbursement rate of fifty-nine percent. That's high. I'm just going to tell you that's, in talking to some of my friends, fifty-nine percent is, you know, pretty good, you know, compared.
They're going to cover fifty-nine percent of that ten point... ten million eight sixty-four?
I'm sorry, say that again?
They're going to cover fifty-nine percent of that ten million eight sixty-four?
Well, we're going to get to that. So, what it does is that... So, then, what happens is that fifty-nine... fifty-nine percent reimbursement, which is really a grant, which is estimated maximum facilities grant technically, of what is left, right? Six million one hundred and eleven thousand six ninety-five, broken down as follows. Okay, so then it gets down... It gets into now they're breaking down the fact that the high school roof now will only cost only, right? Five million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand one thirty-eight, and the middle school side of the project will only cost nine hundred and fifty-four thousand five fifty-seven. At that point, the remaining cost to member towns is, of course, the difference, which is four million seven fifty-two eight fifty-three, which is at the bottom of the summary. Okay? And that's based, you know, based on October 1/25. We're, you know, we're using the eighty-five fifteen model. Then what would happen is that Templeton would be on the hook for four million forty-one thousand eight twenty-six, and Phillipston would be seven hundred and eleven thousand twenty-seven dollars. And then, what happens is at that point, and I'll let angry kind of talk about the financing of it all, but there'll be some short-term borrowing while the project is going on because they reimburse, right, as they go. But ultimately, when that... When it's all said and done, you know, whether it be a twenty- or thirty-year bond, that's something that we're talking to our...
Financial advisor.
Thank you. I was going to say counsel, but financial advisors. Whether it's a twenty- or thirty-year, that's, you know, they'll advise us to do that. It'll just be an assessment to both towns, but the district will carry the debt.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So, you're not... So, the school is going to be carrying the debt and not the town?
Yes.
So, it's not necessarily a prop two-and-a-half for the town?
It'd be a debt.
Schools are going to...
There's schools.
Okay. Then my next question in regards to that is, how many have you already worked this into your budgets for the next several years? How have you worked that into your budget? Are you going to come at us looking for a prop two-and-a-half next year to pay off this debt exclusion?
Well, it's, as a debt exclusion, we will just be assessing you, whether it be twenty years or thirty years, whichever the bond is due.
So, ultimately, at the end of the day, you're going to be charging the taxpayers, but you're going to be breaking it up over the next several years. So, technically, let's be real, it is on the taxpayers of Templeton, but broken up over a certain amount of time.
There's no doubt about that. Oh, yes. If that was not conveyed, yes, eventually, it's going to come back.
It sounded like the school was going to be carrying the debt.
We'll carry the debt, meaning we're going to grab the loan.
We have to pay the bill, but we have to pay the bill.
Right.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day.
So, with that being said, you're going to hate me for bringing this up, the regional agreement.
Right.
I'm going to be completely honest with you. I am very hesitant to give the school any money until I see an updated regional agreement. What are your plans with that, in regards to that? Where are you at with that?
Sure.
I don't want Templeton on the hook again for another maintenance or whatever, school or whatever.
So, the regional agreement, going to the regional agreement piece, where the school has... And the select board knows this because I've sent, you know, we've talked about this, but the school has done all it can do in terms of forcing, if that's the word, right, to, you know, to implore, to motivate Phillipston to bring it before its voters. The reason why, you said, "Well, why is that?" We've written subtle letters, mind you, to do that.
What point are you going to get an attorney involved?
We can't. We can't use your money or their money to sue them.
It's up to us.
Right, or to use, you know what I'm saying? So, it's... If you think of it in a certain way, it is... And sue is not the right word, just to bring it to a legal action or to...
Well, that was really the crux of our previous recommendation, was they asked the select board to go to our town, try to force this issue one way or the other by either...
I'm not voting for it.
No, I'm not voting for it. If the school wants money, not giving them the money.
I... This... Whether the agreement is right or wrong, we have to fix the roof. And to not fix it, I remember going to a craft fair with my friend Marsha and having the water run down into buckets, so you had to dodge them. That's not acceptable because if we get mold and kids get sick, we're going to be in real trouble. And it sounds like the MSBA has given us a deal, taken a big chunk of this off. It's unfortunate that the school was built in such a way that we're in this mess, but we are where we are.
Right.
And Dr. Kazivan, oh, sorry.
It's going to be really tough for people to come up with the coin, but better now than never.
Well, that was my next question. Let's just say, people aren't on board with this. What happens next? What's the list look like to get reback on?
So, it's a great question. Yeah, so that's been asked a lot, right? So, what happens if the voters say no? And look, it's the voters.
It has to be both towns, right?
It has to be both towns, absolutely. And then it goes to the vote, and then it goes to votes. Never mind just the town meetings, then it goes to, of course, the vote, right? So, that's why MSBA was actually created, because schools shouldn't be in the business of building things. That's not what we do. And a lot of schools across the state were absolutely built poorly because there was no oversight. So, just to kind of go back to, that's why MSBA is there now because they make sure that if they're going to give you the money, that they're going to, you know, they're going to make sure it's built right. To your point, what happens if it doesn't pass at any... Then, the ARP program only runs in cycles of two years, so they only offer out ARP type of these things every two years. It's not explicitly... It's never been stated, but it has been... It's been whispered. But, look, you know, there was a hundred some odd communities looking for roofs. Ninety-three were accepted into them. There are plenty... There's plenty of need, and whether or not you're accepted into the program the second go-round, I, you know, some people have suggested that, yeah, you're probably going to go to the back of the... But there is no documentation. No one is ever going to say that. I don't know. Like, it's never happened, you know, in all of my career. If we had an MS... If we got fifty-nine percent of something being paid for in the places that I've worked prior, they grabbed it, right? Because that's, in a sense, free money. Or it's money that the communities are not going to have to pay.
Yeah.
The other part is that, just remember that the entire... By statute, that the entire amount of ten million dollars has to be at least authorized to be borrowed. It's not going to cost ten million dollars. Just this... Templeton is very aware of this because this happened with the school. They had to take out the entire... They had to front the entire loan for the school, but it didn't cost that much. But that's what the MSBA make... This is prior to the fifty-nine percent or whatever the percentage was for the school. They require you to take the entire amount, just in, you know, just in case, and make sure that there's cash flow. So, that's... Yes, that's before the fifty-nine percent, yeah.
Is there any way that you can show us, if this were to pass over the next several years, how Phillipston is going to be assessed and how Templeton is going to be assessed? I just want to make sure that their dollar amount that they're liable for isn't eventually going to be asked to be paid for by Templeton residents in your budget.
So...
Makes sense?
Yeah, it does, it does. And so, as a reminder that, you know, this eighty-five fifteen that I'm talking about, no matter... Going back to the original agreement, the original agreement, the one that we're, I guess, currently operating, it was in the seventies, right? Was written in the seventies.
He signed it.
And it's eighty-five fifteen, right? So, it says explicitly, capital projects are eighty-five fifteen. To your point is that you'll be a... Whatever the amounts are, right? You'll know because eighty-five percent of that number is going to be, you know, yours and what I think I put my glasses on, but...
It's based on the October 1 enrollment. It gets broken down on the income sheet, just like all the rest of the portionment does.
So, you're going to see that, obviously, just by looking at that number of four million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand eight fifty-three, that four million forty-one thousand eight twenty-six is in fact eighty... You know, eighty-five percent of that number, and that seven hundred and eleven thousand twenty-seven dollars is fifteen percent of that number. And so, that's how I would say to you, April, that's how you would know because it'll be on the assessment sheet, in the income sheet that we do every year, and it says, you know, transportation or this or that. There'll be, I would imagine, it'll say capital assessment.
But you have it broken down, Phillipston and Templeton?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Because I'm probably going to be asking to see that, to see how the payments are going because I personally want to see that they're making their payments, they're doing their due diligence.
The towns will... So, someone asked me, "What is that going to be the burden of the tax on the person?" Well, we won't know until, you know, we figure out if it's going to be a twenty- or thirty-year bond.
Yep.
Right? And then, we would actually come to the towns and say, "Okay, we know it's this amount. What, you know, what would that mean, you know, in terms of a, you know, overall tax to the taxpayers?" That's something that the towns would help to... Need to help us with. Or I'm sure our financial, you know, folks would say, "Okay, we know what this, the tax rate is, this, and this," and they could give us the number. But I don't have that number yet because we don't know if it's a twenty- or thirty-year note. You know, it'd be hard to, you know...
It does have a hard time with the way that it was presented, sounding as though the school was taking on the debt when, at the end of the day, it is the taxpayers taking on the debt, but in a roundabout way.
Yeah. So, when we were here last time, people were happy that the district was going to take on the debt because of the implications it has on the town if you actually took on the debt.
The bond rating, yes.
The bond rating. So, people were actually like, "Oh, good, you guys are taking on..."
But at the end of the day, it's us making the...
Absolutely, yes.
Still going to have the bill.
Yeah.
Well, let's hope that we can explain people.
Yep. But we're going to do our best.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. So, if part of the problem with the roof is that the flashing was put in incorrectly, why can't we go back to the people who actually put the flashing in?
Well, we did. Back in 2016, when I first started, and we were having some pretty serious issues when I first arrived. We had to kind of go back because that portion of the roof had been done, and you'll have to help me.
They moved in in ninety-nine to that, so it was ninety-seven, ninety-eight with construction projects.
But we found that they were defunct by that point in time, the group. So, but we fixed it ourselves. So, we fixed the major issues of the flashing issues ourselves. But we did, we did go back and tried to find whoever put it in for ninety... Ninety-seven or ninety-six.
All right, so with... How are we going to make sure it doesn't happen again?
So, the MSBA, when they do any project, just like the school, and when it's all done, they have an arm that... Remember, the MSBA, you know, the contractors are the contractors, but the MSBA's got the money. So, the MSBA sends in their... There's a group that comes in and assesses the entire building in that case, right, with the entire building. And they make sure that everything is up to par. They talk to us and say, "Is this working, is that working?" Because they don't get paid until those folks come in and assess the project.
So, it didn't work correctly the last time?
There was no MSBA back then.
All right.
I think what... Excuse me. I think what Liz is driving at is there going to be a warranty on the workmanship and materials of the roof. I think, is that what you're driving at?
Well, first, I always want to hold the people who did the work wrong accountable, and Dr. Kazivan, very nice, explained why we can't do that.
Yeah.
And so, and then the second part is, yes, the warranty and the workmanship because, you know, I don't want to be back here in ten years going, "Oops."
That's exactly right. And so, that's the kind of... Those are the safeguards that the MSBA puts in, so those folks are not affiliated with the contractors or anything like that. It comes in, in a sense, protect the monies that the state is putting up, right? And of course, the whole project.
Yeah. Is it fair to say that the MSBA, you know, they have like standard boilerplate for warranties and the like? Or does it go job by job, or...
That's a great question. So, what'll happen is if it makes it through everything, right, and the OPM, and then there'll be a... The bid will go out, and then, you know, obviously, contractors will, you know, companies will put the bid, put their bids in. That is when a lot of that gets worked out, quite frankly. And you'll know that, look, on the materials, it's twenty years. On workmanship, it's X. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, but that'll all be flushed out as we go.
Is there any possibility that you'll have at least some sort of estimate for the twenty-year and the thirty-year? Because basically, everybody, people are going to have a hard time. Yes, everyone understands that things are going to get more expensive. We'll probably have the best deal we're going to have with the fifty-nine percent in getting it done, but people always want to know what it's going to cost and not write what potentially is a blank check.
That's a... That's... And so, we were running like estimates because, you know, there are a lot of programs to do that. So, you know what your tax rate is currently, right? You know what the amount is, and you can say, "Okay, if I get a, you know, if I get a, you know, a bond at four percent, whatever the percentage is for the bond," and you can... The calculation can be made, right? You can make that. The reason why we like to add the towns into this is because, one, you don't want the school to do it, right? Because eventually, if something were to go wrong, you go, "Look, they lied about it's not two dollars a month or a year, it's twenty-three dollars a year." So, that's why we'd like to work with the towns to figure out, it can be done. What I'm saying is they know, they could take this amount and go, "Okay, well, all right, you could throw different percentages of bonds. I don't know what the bond, you know, market is at this point in time."
We've had the financial advisor gave us some, when we got our first number of twelve million, he gave us some rough estimate, like a ten-year, twenty-year, thirty-year. Obviously, thirty-year, you are paying a ton of interest. Twenty-year seems feasible to me, but until I have real numbers, he's just guessing with that, too, so... And the reason I'm asking this question, really pushing on this, is that that was one of the reasons people gave for why, when there was the debt exclusion for fixing one of the bridges, people are like, it was...
Writing a blank check.
We're not writing a blank check. So, if we could have a range going, "Well, based on these kinds of numbers, this is what we expect someplace in this range." Because then that at least, you know, I'm making up numbers completely. It's like, "Oh, it's only going to add five dollars to your tax bill," or it's going to, you know, and that just kind of, I mean, it's going to get more expensive. And it makes sense, but people need something.
We can certainly ask them to do the projections, and of course, there'll be a disclaimer on the top of it, like...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I mean, just about...
You know, we want to make sure that we, you know, and we can... You know, we want to make sure that we, you know, and we can, it can be done, we.
I ha- I have an email into them, I'm waiting to hear back, so then when I get that number, then I can call, I'm assuming, your assessor's office. And they could probably give a rough like, hey, that's gonna cost twenty-five cents on a tax bill or three dollars or something.
That's why we would need them, the assessors office, yes.
Question.
Sure.
Um, so we go through with this, we get it repaired. What do you have in place in regards to like routine maintenance on a yearly basis? Like, do you have funds set aside for that? Is that something you're gonna be looking for down the road? Or are we just gonna let it wear out until we're at the point where we are at now? Like, what is your plan in regards to maintaining?
So the plan with the roof, again, now, we don't have a new, right, the roof is old, so it's it's a little bit different than it will be, we we hope, right? Um, but we take care of the the maintenance of, well, of the district, right? So the roof itself will probably go through its yearly checks, like they, you know, prior to the school year. We we do all of the checks that that need to be done, you know, uh, to go into the new school year. The one caveat I would say is, again. Not to like, you know, kind of add insult to injury, but there's also this other section of roof that is, that really just missed. This, the twenty-five year old, you know, kind of threshold. Now, you know, that's, that's probably okay, because to do that entire roof. Meaning if that roof, that if the entire building's roof was twenty-six, twenty-seven years old, you know, and it was all eligible to be to be replaced. I don't even want to think about that number, to be very candid. Great, it's almost better to kind of, uh, personally, to kind of piecemeal this, you know, at some point. Um, but they'll have to, we'll just continue what we're doing now with the older sections of the roof if everything gets replaced. Is one is just really kind of maintenance, making sure that everything is still still good. On the other side, which is is on the middle school side of things, which is the older part of the building, we're still gonna have to do those things that, for example. During the winter time, we know that when water pools up there, we need to move snow from, you know, make sure that the roof drains are 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 clear. Uh, that we do all the things that we are currently doing for the entire facility, right? We'll we'll probably only have to worry about, you know, to be really vigilant on those, you know. Older parts of the building.
Are you budgeting now to replace that roof?
Not not at this moment in time, because we don't have a, we don't have a cost to do that. Like, we we didn't, they wouldn't, they're not going to do it.
But I mean, I projected our.
Projected, we did, um. Yes, so.
I'm sure before twenty or thirty years up, the rest of the roof will probably need replacing. But MSBA won't touch that part now, so that's why we're not asking.
Yeah.
For the town.
I I know, but I'm asking, eventually, it's gonna need to be replaced.
True.
But you're saying it's just missed the cutoff.
It did, I I don't know by how many years I'd have to, you know.
Have you guys? Budgeted for when it does need to be replaced or are we gonna be in another sticky position where a roof needs to be replaced and we're gonna have to come up with X amount of dollars?
Yes, because the Narragansett Building is the regional, so if anything that's major like that would be coming back to the both towns to share the cost.
So we had a roofing company come out in two thousand and fourteen, when I get, when things were really, they were starting to go sideways on the roof. And so, uh, we still have that old assessment of the entire roof. Um, and that was, you know, millions of dollars back in two thousand and fourteen. Do you know, to, you know, to give you, we'd have to, we'd have to have, we'd have to have, you know, a. A contractor go up, quite frankly, again, because we've already had several go up there, well, not contractor, but the MSBA to go up there to, uh. Do the work that they've done, we'd have to figure out what sections are, um, just because they're old does not mean that they're that they're, um. That they're in trouble, right? They're they're, you know, they look at every single section and say, well, that one is starting to, you know, do whatever a bad roof does.
Make a map.
Water, yeah, so so they know when the red spots are, that's that's how we knew, right? The red spots of all on the roof were the ones that had to be changed, right? On the, what is now going to be the, on the older side, thinking positive, you know, there were less red spots there because they were quote unquote newer. I think it was two thousand and eleven, Emery, yeah, so two thousand and eleven, they 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 made. You know, whatever they fixed up there, they fixed, um, so they're in better condition. Um, so I don't, I don't have a, the answer is I don't have that cost because we, that's not what they did, but we can go back and try to. Um, figure out what areas can be assessed again.
So.
Yeah.
So with, with adding the, making it, um, oh, whatever, um. To to be able to put the. The solar panels and stuff on, I know you you're not, are you changing the pitch? I mean, New England in a flat roof just is is silly, you know? So are are you taking the opportunity to change the pitch so that way we?
No, no, and that actually came up, I forgot what meeting, someone asked, are you going to now make a, you know, a pitch roof?
Or or at least?
No, the honestly was the answer because one, it just didn't call for that. Um, it's a flat roof model, with the exception of the high school side, like especially where Jim is not flat roof, right? So wherever they would have put those those, um, solar panels, we never got into because we, they took them off. Do you know what I'm saying, like, it was, we subtracted that from the equation, so I don't know exactly where they would have gone, but they would have gone where they could be supported. That that's that's what we were told.
Well, I I'm more interested in the pitch of the roof.
Sure, yeah.
Is that, if, so.
The pitch of the roof is not being changed, that would have been a major, they would have, that would have had to, I think, be. They would have had to change the, you know, the entire structure of the, they're gonna take the existing structure of the building and of course replace it. To pitch it, they would have to, of course, add materials and, you know, of course, right, beams and all those type of things, and that was not part of the, part of the stack.
All right, thank you, sorry.
This is an ongoing process. In the seventies, when I was on the board, board of health with Walter. We replaced the big part of the roof of the high school. Because it was built in, what, fifty-eight, something like that? Yeah, so this is just an ongoing process and it's really unfortunate that they built a school like they did. Tools, just got something to say.
All right, fir- first of all, are there any other questions of members?
Thank you.
All right, uh, do you have a question?
I do, um, I have a question regarding, um, retiring school, capital school debt.
Yep.
Are there any projects scheduled to come off?
We haven't had any since the addition was built back in the late nineties.
Okay.
So that has been off of the town's books for quite a few years now.
All right, and that was a twenty year, right?
I think it was a thirty. No, it must have been twenty because my daughter is not thirty yet. Okay, that's how you tell, yeah.
The boiler project was done, the wood chip boiler was done by exclusively by the school, correct? So, yeah, so that would be, that's our, that, that's on the building, yes, we haven't had any. On the districts, on the regional, we haven't had one.
At this point, uh, do you have any closing remarks, so to speak?
No, we we understand how quick this is happening, I will say to you that, you know. This is, it's really born of of the MSBA and all the requirements that they that they really mandate. So we know that we're moving quickly, uh, you know, Templeton had a meeting already planned, thankfully. Um, we understand that, you know, that once that meeting happens, we, right, that Phillipson will then. Allow us to schedule town meeting, a special town meeting to, you know, to do, you know, discuss it. Then we're gonna have to then, very quickly, because by the end of January, in a sense, we have to have the vote as well. So we understand, then you have, you know, of course, we have the Christmas break in there, so it's. It, the timing is is really been been rough, but, um, we're just gonna have to do what we gotta do, we're prepared to do that, we're just gonna go step by step. Um, we get through each stage a- as we as we go, uh, so first step is next week and then.
I just want to make sure we're clear, both towns need to vote to approve this or it's not happening.
Absolutely, and on the town floor and at the ballot.
And also I. Follow up April's question is the clock really started to tick, uh, on October twenty-nine.
Then we receive the weather.
The hundred, is that a hundred and twenty day clock, is that?
Actually, ninety, yes, that's.
The working days or?
January twenty-seventh is the deadline.
That's twenty-seventh is the deadline.
And that is a firm deadline, so if you.
I would think.
If we don't jump through all these hoops by January twenty-seven.
Yep.
We're dead.
Yeah.
Yes, and we knew, we knew this back in August, but we have to wait for everything to happen exactly how it needs to happen, so.
Was it the twenty-seventh or the twenty-ninth, the deadline, January twenty-seventh or twenty-nine?
I think we counted up to.
Twenty-seventh, but I don't, you'd have to count out nineties, I would say twenty-nine, but I don't know if there's, yeah, in there somewhere.
Yeah, I just, this is kind of for the public is that, but this deadline is very, very tight.
Yeah.
You have the Christmas season, uh, even if everything goes perfectly right. I think you're gonna bump up against that deadline and I I hope we don't go over it, then.
We're gonna do our best, you know, honestly, and we understand that, so we'll, we'll just do what we gotta do. We appreciate the time, um, so, but if you have any questions for us, please, you know, let us know and we'll 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 get those rough numbers, we'll do the best we can. With the information we have to just kind of give a ballpark in terms of what it will be the cost to the taxpayer, I think it's very important, absolutely. It just, we'll need some help from the towns to do that, because from the town assess office to do that.
And my my final question is, when you make your presentation at the fall town meeting, will you have something like this narrative for the public?
That we plan to, uh, like.
I think it would be very helpful if the public, you know, the back there had.
Before we hand it out or?
The the town moderator.
Okay.
John Graves.
Yep, oh, absolutely, so I think we like, but we'll we'll look at this to see if this is a little too busy. Honestly, we'll take a look at this tomorrow and we'll we'll get that process, we'll get that moving, so it's a little busy.
Bullet bullet points.
Yeah, they just, yeah, no, really, just, yeah, we'll 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 just, absolutely, that makes sense.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, see you.
Okay, um, at this point, uh. You are the two members of the public left standing, so it's just, I would, out of deference to both of you, uh, like to go to, uh. Article nine. And also the related, we'll we'll do article nine first, but obviously, uh, article ten is, uh. A related citizens petition and Julie, I I'm assuming that you're the petitioner.
I, thank you.
And, uh, okay, why don't you step up then?
No, I should stop here.
We're going to, um, check the building to read, uh, article nine.
Article nine, citizens petition moratorium on water. Water fluoridation, to see if the town of Templeton shall institute a moratorium on water fluoridization in Templeton. Until such time as the manufacturer of the fluor- fluoriding chemical provides. Information regarding the identification of any contaminants in the fluoriding chemical batch. And a toxicology report and verification of safety for the fluoriding. Chemical to ensure that it does not reduce IQ in children.
And before I start with the presentation, will your, will your presentation overlap in the article ten? Do you think?
Yes. Yeah.
You want to read both?
Yeah, could you?
I mean, they are two separate ones.
Yeah, they are two separate.
Yeah.
All right, I I guess I'm reading it, all right, um, article ten, citizens petition fluoride. Move that the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to seek special legislation as set forth below. Provided, however, that the general court may make clerical or or editorial changes. Of form only to the bill unless the board of selectmen is hereby authorized to approve. Uh, amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition as follows. An act authorizing annual town meeting as the responsible party on any and all decisions involving fluoridating. Or not fluoridating the public water supply, section not one, notwithstanding section eight C, chapter. Three, title, ooh, what is that?
Chapter one eleven.
Good, chapter one, thank you. Chapter one eleven, I apologize. Part one of the general laws or of any general or special law of the contrary, the legislative body of the annual town meeting. But the majority vote shall be authorized to make any and all decisions in regards to. Fluoridating or not fluoridating the public water supply, however, should the town meeting vote to fluoridate. The public water supply oversight on fluoride dose shall go to the town's board of health. Annual town meeting shall also make decisions on health warning involving water fluoridation. And any other decisions involving fluoride and the public water supply. Section two, upon effective date of this act, the legislative body of the annual town meeting. Shall become the responsible party for all the matters concerning fluoride and the public water supply. Section three, this act shall take effect upon passage, a citizens petition submitted by Julie Farrell and fourteen others. Majority vote required.
Where you start, I have one question.
Yep.
Yes, yes, great, you identify yourself.
Yeah, Julie Farrell, twenty-four Myrtle Street, Boneville, Mass.
Thank you.
All right.
Right, I. I want to, um, I I need your help on this.
All right.
I. Is I I noticed that the petition was, uh, you know, the petitions were signed by, uh, yourself and fourteen other. And I guess my question is, uh. Is is there a requirement for the fall town meeting being a special town meeting that you have to have?
I think it's a hundred.
Right, is there any exception, I know, I know you were a.
Well.
Board member at one time, or how how did this get in front of us?
That's what I was gonna start with. All right, so back in May, I was surprised to learn that my petitions. Were not put on the annual town meeting.
Were they filed in the proper time prior to the May town meeting?
Yes.
They were, okay.
All right. So I contacted the former.
Mr. Curry?
No.
The ITA.
Adam, okay.
TA, and I have an email to the effect that it was too late to do anything about it. So that I would have to wait till the special town meeting in the fall.
Okay.
And the selectman agreed to that.
Was there any discussion at that time as to the?
This was not.
Significant requirement?
This is all by email.
So there's no discussion?
No, I got. The email from the former. Assistant town administrator, whatever the heck the name was, oh, yeah, and. That's what was decided. And then I got an email. And after the change in administration here. From the chair of the board of selectmen that my articles would be on the special town meeting in the fall.
Oh, from Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
I guess my question is. Is that a hundred signatures? Is that a hard and fast requirement?
I don't know, I'm not an attorney, I just was.
I don't, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to trick.
I really have absolutely no idea, this was just what was offered to me to make up for the snafu that happened. Mr. Chair, in the spring.
Yeah, I I just, uh, well, I want to.
They're on the warrant. But we should. Do what we do, they're on the warrant, it's not our job to question how they got there. That's not our authority, our authority is to take what's on the warrant and either say, yes, we approve it or we don't.
I think.
Well, that's a different, that's a whole other ballgame.
I think, I think the reason why I asked this is I just.
This is gonna come up.
I, it's it's two reasons, is, um, is, uh. I I I think it might bring grief on you with, you know, at the town meeting.
Book on grief.
What I what I am trying to say is.
Footprints on her path.
No, what what I am trying to say is that, um, you know, there there may be, you know, a motion to pass over or a motion to table or, you know, some.
That's up to the town meeting.
That's up to town meeting to decide, right now, I, all of this was out of my hands, it was on the warrant, so I'm coming here. You suggested when we ran into you at a dinner one night that I should come to a town meet, you know, pre-town to.
No, and I do, I do, I do, no, I do appreciate that, uh, you know, because. At the end of the day, you know, the whole purpose of the meeting is for, uh, you know, the towns pay, townspeople, the taxpayers. To have all sides as much as possible of an issue, when you're here tonight, and I very much appreciate. That you did take the time to be here tonight, uh, but, you know, I I raised that, you know, I raised that because, uh. You know, that that could be a hurdle, uh.
I I I understand that.
I just bring it up.
As a, as a hurdle, I've I've got all the documentation on what happened, why it happened and.
As a, as a hurdle, I've, I've got all the documentation on what happened, why it happened, and, you know, I don't know whether it's legal or not. Uh, that's not for me to decide. So.
Well, I, I.
Warrant, I'm here.
I, I would say, I would say this. I look at, and I've stated this many, many times in public meetings, is that continuity of, uh, your town officials is very, very important. And in, in just since March, you know, we've had, uh, you know, three different, uh, town administrators. We've had, uh, a couple of different, uh, you know, people in the office, in the front office. We've had four different accountants. Uh, we've had, uh, two different, uh, Chairs of the Board, uh, three new members of the Board of Select Board, three new members of this all in the past six months.
Right.
And I just, um, and, uh, you know, I, I feel that we're starting to see things appear to fall through the cracks.
Right. No, I think that things are finally getting straightened out. We're dealing with.
Yes, there is continuity now. You're, you're right. There's continuity, but.
And you're still gonna deal with the, with the effects of what we had before for a while, is what it is.
It is, it is, it is what it is. I mean, I know, I know in conversations with Mr. Ryan, uh, you know, he's talked about finding, you know, landmines here or there and.
Right, yeah.
But, in any event, I, I wanted to raise that. I, I felt, I felt it would be fair to you and fair to the public to at least raise that.
Right.
I, I hope you, you know, understand that.
I do. I, I, I understand that this is, you know.
So, um.
I've made a valiant effort over many years to put these articles on town meeting floor, and if I have to put them back on the May one, I will.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
No, I, I had more of a, an informational statement.
Okay.
That this, this, there is precedent for this happening because the, the previous select board did this with another article that they, they held it over. They didn't make folks, uh, the citizen petition go back and do it again. So it's not.
It has a precedent.
It has a precedent.
Okay.
So.
Now.
All right.
Now, 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 okay. I, so now the next question.
All right.
If you, if you talk for a few moments, uh, why, why don't we do it in this order, uh, you know, first Article nine?
Right.
And then, uh, Article ten.
Okay.
Your, your reasons why you brought the petition.
Right.
And why you feel that it's important, uh, that this be passed at the Ball Town Meeting and you have the floor.
All right. Well, on Article nine, the petition that I submitted, if it gets to town floor and we get to discuss it, I'll be making a substitute motion. I will be getting rid of on the second line where it says manufacturer fluoridating chemicals all the way through and just adding as such a time as the Court of Appeals has decided the case, because the case that I'm talking about is this case. Northern, it's the US District Court, Northern District Court of California, Food and Water Watch Incorporated at all. They're the plaintiffs versus the EPA, who are the defendants. Took seven years to do this case. And what the judge found finally, in September of twenty twenty-four, seven years, started in two thousand seventeen, that fluoride, it's reasonable to assume that fluoride lowers, water fluoridation lowers IQ in children. Now, with the new administration in, this is, this is a private groups suing the Environmental Protection Agency, the agency that's supposed to be protecting us.
Oh, this was a finding. You know, I just want to clarify it for, you know.
This is judgment. This is, this.
The judgment of?
Yes. Okay.
And the, and part of the judgment was a finding?
They, they, the judge.
Fluoride lowers IQ.
EPA, the EPA needs to do something. He didn't say what, but to make sure that children's IQs were not impacted.
Okay, so there was a, so there is a linkage between fluoride and water and lowering IQ.
Like lowering IQ in children.
Okay.
Okay. So, once that was finally decided, then I, I put this forward for May, and now the EPA is appealing this ruling. So what I want the moratorium to last for until the appeal is decided. So just to pause putting water fluoridation chemicals into the town of Templeton's public water supply until the case has been appealed.
And do you have any idea how long the appeal may last and what?
Be seven years?
What the outcome is based?
I, I have.
Oh, it's a long process. Okay.
It's a long process. I, I don't know. I don't, you know, I don't have my magic eight ball with me. I should have brought it. But, you know, I'd have one on my phone. But I, I don't know how long it would take. I know a moratorium has to be dependent on a certain timeframe, and I think that is a timeframe that would be reasonable until the appeal is decided. Okay, so that's what this article is about.
So say, say the end result of the whole case on appeal, you know, somewhere down the road, is, uh, a judgment, a final judgment in favor of the plaintiffs. Do you think, um, you know, you know, and I know you're not a lawyer, and it's probably not a fair question, but, uh, would it be a nationwide ruling?
Well, I don't know if it would be nationwide. I know right now, currently, certain states have banned water fluoridation chemicals. Florida and Utah have banned it. Some counties in other states have banned it. Okay? This goes to, uh, the next article. Okay?
Is, is there any more? Before we go to the next article, is there any more on, uh, you know, Article nine?
Article nine, no, that's, it's just, I would like a moratorium on water fluoridation chemicals.
Till, until that case is.
Until that case, this is finally adjudicated. Okay?
All right. So that's all you want to say about?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Uh, do any members of the committee have any questions about, um, Julie about Article nine? Of?
No.
All right, Article ten.
Article ten. All right. Now, in Massachusetts, being the special state that we are, we have a, a law that does not allow a community governed by, under that law, that has already begun fluoridation, which we have since nineteen fifty-one, without first petitioning the general court for a home rule exemption to chapter one eleven, section eight C. That's what this article is for. It's for a home rule petition. And at that point, if this is, if this is successful and it goes to, and gets heard at the state and they approve it, then it would be up to town meeting to decide whether you could fluoridate water or not.
Has any other, uh, community, you know, within the Commonwealth ever successfully brought a home rule petition that you are aware of?
Yeah, for fluoride, there's two. I can't, I don't know. Somerset's working on it. Someplace up in Cape, Ian, I'm not sure if it was.
Both Shore Lake, Lost River.
Yeah, someplace up there. Um.
Has any city or town actually, uh, besides bringing one, have they actually been successful? And if you don't know, you don't know.
Well, no, there's, there's two.
They have been.
There's two that have been successful that have removed, you know, they did the home rule petition, voted for, and they don't use water fluoridation. Okay? Massachusetts is strange because not every community that has a public water supply fluoridates.
That's still true for Worcester.
Worcester, I think there's a small, tiny section of Worcester that fluoridates, but most of Worcester is not fluoridated. So it's really hit or miss.
Yeah, I, I thought Worcester was like the largest, uh, body within the state, you know, body of population within the state that had not.
Pod is not, there's no water fluoridation in the Cape's water. Berkshire's? No.
Okay.
It's just kind of a mishmash of who fluoridates and who doesn't. And, and around the Boston area, the MWR, they do water fluoridation. So all those communities that are part of that, that get water from Wabbin and Wachusett and.
This is about half the towns in the state.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the answer's that.
I, I do, I do have a comment on Worcester, uh, cause I, I have done a little bit of research on this myself. Uh, for large cities, Worcester, Springfield, or, and Brockton do not fluoride. They don't use fluoride.
Ever?
Uh, according to the research, a little bit of research I did on it, no. And what, what we do have in the state is, uh, approximately, this is from, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, a hundred and ninety communities in the town do have fluoride. They're in the state. So out of the three hundred and fifty-one communities or municipalities in the state, a hundred and ninety do fluoride, the rest are not.
So in the, most of the, probably a hundred and sixty of a hundred and ninety of the MWR, you know.
They, they do tend to be from, you know, like, say, Route ninety-one east. Most of the western part of the state does not fluoride.
Okay. Anything else that you wish to say?
No, that's just what these articles are trying to do.
I have something.
I'm sure.
I can ask him maybe. Now, what do you mean?
My name is Scott Schwinger. I'm, uh, I'm nine Vernon Street. I'm the Superintendent of the Water Department.
What's your first name?
Scott.
Scott. Okay. Scott.
Scott, excuse me. Scott, you're relatively new to the position, right?
Yeah, not quite three years.
Welcome.
I, I do have fifteen years of experience in the water department.
Would it, would it be, maybe be appropriate, you, you wanna come forward and?
Sure.
Yeah, you want the hot seat?
No, you two can sit next to her now there. You can share the mic.
There you are.
Sorry, yes. When, when people, when people, when they refer to fluoride, when, are we talking about the kind of fluoride you get in your toothpaste?
Yeah.
That goes in the water?
Yep.
Same kind?
I don't, yes.
It is?
I do not know if there's specifics that are different between manufacturing and toothpaste and what we inject into the water. I, as far as a chemical composition of it, there could be some slight differences. I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
But the chemical that we inject into the water is just sodium fluoride.
Okay.
That's, that's what the problem is.
And it's in so many other things nowadays. I personally don't feel as though it's needed in our water anymore. It is in everything.
And you can get prescriptions for it.
Yeah.
I have two young kids in the school system, you know, there was just a, you know, a pamphlet came through if you wanted to apply it on their teeth at school.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of places you can get it.
In, in nineteen fifty-one, I was five. Do you know what people knew about fluoride? Zero nada. Probably they just said, okay, and now you have to jump through hoops to get it out, which makes absolutely no sense at all. But, um, you know, it's, I think that it's worth looking at. I think it's, Julie's done a lot of work for a long time.
For the record, the Water Department is in favor of getting rid of the wa, of the fluoride in the water. We don't necessarily agree with the way these articles are written, uh, especially number ten, but, um, the end game of getting rid of the water is we are for it.
Everybody, when I was a kid, I never went to the dentist unless I had a toothache or something bad happened, because we didn't have any money, for one thing, and we lived, we lived out on South Road. I still do. I have well water. Fluoride doesn't do me any good. And, um, what happens if China breaks into your water system and they mess around with, I see, what was it, Warren? They broke into their, their water system?
Little, little bit.
Littleton, yeah, little.
That was the lady in the water.
Well, can they do damage by dumping too much fluoride in the water? I don't know what else you put in there.
I guess technically, if they got in there and they manipulated the chemical injection pump.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
But keep in mind, these chemical injection pumps are about the size of a tissue box.
Okay.
They, even if you max it out.
We have a Nacala.
Can only
Yeah.
Only inject so much fluoride. You, you can't poison the system with fluoride.
Okay.
With the pumps that we have available.
So the Water Department is in favor of removing fluoride from our water?
We are. We look at it more from a financial standpoint and the safety aspect of it for myself and my men.
Okay.
Um, we have to wear rubber gloves, eye protection, and respirators because it is a powder.
That's what I was getting at, you know.
Barrel.
Yeah.
Uh, then we have a me, uh, specific measured cup that we take out of that barrel, put it in what we call fluoride saturator, which is where it mixes with the water. And it's, it's a dangerous raw chemical. It's toxic. So if it gets on your skin and you leave it there, it will give you a chemical burn. It's terrible to ingest or to inhale. Um, and then it goes and get in your eye. It's a toxic chemical, so. It will necessarily blind you, but it will certainly irritate your nose.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a dangerous chemical.
Just to play devil's advocate, I, you know, I remember the last time this came on the town floor, or a time a number of years ago, and I seem to remember, uh, you know, someone from the town saying that there were numerous studies that because the percentage in parts per million, you know, of fluoride in the water, that there were numerous studies that said that there were no effects, no harmful effects. So I gue, I guess what I want to ask both of you, both of you, is, uh, where, where is the science on this?
Up today?
So.
So, you know, because, because your position is really a hundred and eighty degrees from a position, uh, you know, that the town appeared to have just as a matter of a few years ago.
But our position now isn't about the science of it.
Okay.
It's about the financial impact of it. Um, for us, by two thousand twenty-seven, DEP is making a similar eighty thousand dollars into our fluoride systems, which is a lot of money.
Is that to upgrade the existing system?
That's correct.
And how much, if you know off the top of your head, how much, um, does fluoride, uh, costly town of Templeton?
It costs about eight thousand dollars a year to buy the raw handle. Yeah, and there, there's, I, I actually did work up some numbers on it, um, because it's, the, the cost of it just keep rising with everything. Uh, Water Departments, you know, Sewer Department, the costs just don't seem to stop. DEP just continues to put all these requirements on us, and everything's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So from a financial standpoint, fluoride doesn't make the water cleaner or safer. It's strictly there for oral health. So we can eliminate it and still produce the same quality of water with one less chemical injected into it. It was a lot less expensive for us to deal with, a lot less paperwork, because we, we keep track of it every day. Um, so there's daily paperwork, monthly paperwork, and annual paperwork that goes along with fluoride.
This is going to the state DEP?
Department of Public Health and DEP. So every month I have to send out two chemical reports, one to DEP, one to DPH.
So there's an administrative cost as well as the cost of the raw chemical?
The raw chemical, um, so they're, they're making us put these analyzers in by two thousand twenty-seven. Depending on the make and model, they're between sixteen thousand and twenty-two thousand apiece. We need one for each station. Um, with that comes a monthly cost of a hundred and fifty-seven dollars you would take uh, for the reagents to go with each kit. So that's a hundred and fifty-seven times three stations, times twelve months. So you, these costs are adding up. Um, the chemicals, lab chemicals that we use to test against in our lab, I just recently bought them. They're a hundred and eighty-five dollars a gallon that we use for these reagents, and we use three a day. Not three gallons a day, but three standards. So that, I bought six gallons. That's only about two months' worth of, of, uh, product. So these costs that are associated with fluoride, uh, just to maintain, and then the projected cost that we're gonna have to absorb by two thousand twenty-seven, it, it, it gets very expensive. And if we can eliminate the financial burden of this and the safety aspect to my men without having to handle that raw chemical, less paperwork, less chemicals in the water, well, we, that's, that's the viewpoint we're looking at it now, not necessarily the oral health aspect of it.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you, earlier you stated you're all for removing the fluoride from the water. However, you had an issue with the way Article ten was written. And you just.
Absolutely.
Tell me about that.
Um, yeah. What's that?
The parts don't you love?
Uh.
No, so Subotia.
The, the parts that, uh, we don't accept are, um, any and all decisions involving fluoride will be handled by Select Board or Board Health. Uh, basically omitting the Water Department. So what that says to me is you're. So what that says to me is you're removing all the professional water license holders.
Okay.
From any of these decisions, which won't stand.
All right.
Was that not, like, assuming it did pass with that uh cause it to uh fail uh when it goes in front of the Attorney General?
Yep.
That's an amendment that really has.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, no, this is good to, because this is boilerplate that I get from an organization that works on removing water from fluoride in Massachusetts. And because we have chapter one eleven, section eight, C. This is how we're supposed to do it. That's how we're told we're supposed to do it. So I'll see what alternative of we can just eliminate that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just vote, but we do have to have formal petition. To have town meeting vote to get rid of it.
That part doesn't bother me.
Okay.
It it's it's just, it's just, you know, when it's any and all decisions. You 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 remove the water department completely from that. Um, and because we're the only ones licensed to.
Right.
Do this, where you you can't.
So in other words, the Board of Health and the Select Board have to be able to delegate to you.
Yep, we have to work together.
Is there any other language that uh would need to be amended?
No, those, no, no, we're just uh.
Yeah.
What's bothering me?
All right.
Um, so we just gotta change those around.
Okay.
I really appreciate you coming and taking the time.
Yeah, that was nice.
Over this.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I live here too. You know, this isn't just a job for me. I've, I've lived here for twenty years. My kids go to the school system here.
Yeah.
You know, I like this job. I like our community.
I like the fact that you're working together.
So, you know, this is important.
Yeah, I do have one follow up question. This is for both of you.
Sure.
What? The home rule petition, is that? Does that have to be approved at a town meeting by a majority vote of the Select Board or?
That I don't know.
Process of Julie, you know, the process.
We, we are looking into that. Um, because before I could come here, I had to make sure that my board of commissioners were on board with me coming here and doing this. So as a group, as a water department group, I had to make sure that we were all on the same page, which we are. Um.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Relative to that, if this passes. Um. You know, maybe at that point, uh, you know, the town council should be involved.
Oh, he would anyway.
Oh, yeah, we we have a a legal team specifically for just the water aspect of of the water department.
So is that.
We have multiple legal councils for different aspects of the party, and we're gonna reach out to the water specific guy.
Because because I, the reason why I raise this is if you get to uh drafting a home rule petition, your language really has to be.
Correct.
It's not air tight. Uh, the legislature won't fly.
Right.
You know, it's difficult enough to get things through the legislature. You know, they have thousands of bills a year. And fewer than two hundred make the cut.
Correct.
You know, sign into law, and you really have to have their type.
Yeah, language. Yeah, we have a legal council that's gonna work on it. So, you know, even even if it does get voted on, this is still a. Lengthy process before we can physically shut the pumps off. You know, we we can't just shut the pumps off and I've said, you know, everything has to be approved legally, like you're saying.
Right.
Then that has to go to D E P and D P H, get their blessing. And, you know, it could be months down the road before we finally shut the pumps off.
Right, this is really a start.
Yep.
Yeah, I I guess, I guess when.
But they could not get upgraded and maybe.
If we could do this before twenty twenty seven, then you won't have to do the upgrade.
Correct.
Right, yeah. So it's in both of our interests to get this.
Yeah.
Now, if you don't do the upgrade. Come twenty twenty seven, will you be fined or will you just not be allowed to put it in the water?
No, um, we would probably. We would probably get notices of noncompliance, which are, they're not necessarily fines, but they do go on our record. You know, the water department, water and lights is highly. Um. Scrutinized, and we have, I have to answer the Department of Public Health, D E P and E P A.
Would that go against your license? I think that's the more.
It would, but it wouldn't be something that will remove our license or anything like that. Um. Notices of noncompliance to go on your record, but it's kind of like a speeding thing. You know what I mean? It's nothing that they're going to. Um, take my license away from me, my water license. Um, they're not gonna, the state's not gonna step in and run the water department. In such that nature, and then they they can find you. Um, I don't know anybody that's gotten fined, uh, so I don't know what a fine may look like. Um.
So is there another, if, because thi- this this has gone in front of town meeting multiple times. And been unsuccessful, not from the lack of effort. But it, so is there an alternative way? To remove the fluoride from the water? Is there another method that if this doesn't work?
I I don't know that. We're looking into that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah.
I think, I think what what is different than prior times is, you know, I'm not aware of any town officials who ever spoken in favor of. You know, fire petitions, and I I really think that what you say. Or what, you know, members of the water department or other town officials say would really have great weight with the tax.
And I can certainly speak at town meeting.
And I I think, I think that you should, I think that you should.
Sure.
Is the health board behind this also? The Board of Health, or are they going to?
I I have a thing. I doubt Jane would be.
I do too. I, she. Traditional. She's, no, she's in the dental field.
It means a lot to her. She sees it.
Can I know that's? Right.
Through children's teeth.
And she sees what happens, you know, when kids don't have proper oral hygiene or access to dental.
Well, she stood up on town meeting floor a number of years ago and said, oh, we have all of these studies. I actually did a records request for all, give me a list of the studies, right? She couldn't. So, I, you know, I was like, okay, you know, you reference these in town meeting, provide them. And that there is, I understand the importance, but there's, there's also studies that say. You know, they did a a cancer study in rats, and the rats, you know, there was cancer in there. There's. You know, there's a reason why when you have a a toddler and you're brushing their teeth, and the dentist tells you, and the hy- the um. Um, pediatrician tells you, don't let the kid eat the toothpaste.
Right.
There's a reason for all of that, and um, so i- it's better let somebody, let. Let yourself control your own body and what goes into it.
I think the difference this time is that study that Julie has, because you showed that to me. Or I read it.
The N T P, the.
A while ago.
Yeah.
And my friend who just moved near me. She was like, no, no, we had, I said, read this, and when she got done reading it. She was like, oh my goodness, because it is new information that they've never had before. And it does show a correlation, and it's always been kind of like, oh, yeah, maybe kind of stuff. But I think they're showing more of a correlation between fluoride and like Elizabeth says. You're not supposed to drink, swallow it, you're not supposed to eat. It's not good for you.
Well, the reason why this.
The difference between now and all the other times you stood up.
Well, the reason why the lawsuit took seven years is because for two years it was being withheld.
Yep.
The National Toxicology Report, they came out and showed a correlation between loss of I Q and fluoride, water fluoridation.
Yep.
They held it up for two years because they didn't want that getting out, so the.
Who who did that study?
Who did? The national, it's, it's a government agency, the National Toxicology Program.
Okay.
All right, I can get the information free. I didn't bring that with needs like this that.
This leads me to, this leads me to this question, I think.
What's different?
I didn't want the, you know, one of the arguments, you know, in favor of the oral health aspect is. That the parts per million, you know, is just, while. While fluoride is, uh, you know, poisonous or neurotoxin or dangerous in its raw form. And, you know, such minute quantities of, you know, so many parts per million, it it really dilutes it. So my question of both of you is, what what is your response to that?
Well, my response is it's.
Is it like mercury where no level at all is safe or?
They, I don't, you don't know the dose, okay? You don't know how much water I drink, how much coffee I make with the water that's fluoridated. How many like.
Do you boil?
Pasta I boil, the rice, everything that you make that absorbs water. That uses water, you know, fluoridated water contributes to the overall amount of fluoride that you're ingesting. So it it depends, and there's some people who are very sensitive to it. If you have kidney disease, if you're on dialysis, if you have thyroid problems. You're not supposed to be drinking fluoridated water.
But but you see where I'm going is, you know, that's really been the argument, at least in my mind, for years and years, is that it's such a small quantity. And is it fair to say that uh the science is heading in the direction of, you know, like. Something like mercury where there is no safe level, no matter what the.
It's like lead, okay?
Or lead, I mean, is it is the science that way or what? Okay.
Think you can really compare those two chemicals to fluoride. Uh, lead has never been safe, ever. No one's ever said that lead's safe in this amount in the water. Um, mercury, no one's ever said that you can have seven milli- point seven milligrams per liter of mercury in the water.
It's never safe, mercury.
Right.
But why, so why is it, well, with fluoride, how's that, what's the distinguishing difference between mercury and fluoride?
Different sub.
Other, other than, you know.
The dose.
Having everything, everything's different. They're, they're not comparable.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not. If if fluoride was as dangerous as mercury. It would never have been allowed in the water ever. So, you know, fluoride, is fluoride. Dangerous in its raw form? Yes, it is. There's three spelling crossbones on every bag, and it's made in China. From a safety aspect for my guys, that, those are the guys that are at the most risk, is the handling of the raw chemical. Okay. Point seven milligrams per liter is the legal dose that we have to regulate to be in compliance with having fluoride in the water. I don't know who came up with that number, but it's been that number for a very long time. It was one, and then they reduced it to point seven. I don't know when. Um, so this is an ongoing monitoring and studying of this chemical. For oral health. I have to take their word for it that it works in the oral health industry. I'm not a chemist. I don't, I don't know these things. I know what I have to do to be in compliance, and we are, we're always in compliance. We have monthly tests, and we have, one of the chemical reports that I have to send out. I have to send out our findings that we do in our lab, then that report goes to an independent lab to verify that what we're testing is correct. It's called a split sample. Every month we do that. We're in compliance every month to. Department of Public Health and D E P's recommendations of point seven milligrams per liter.
What about the purity of the fluoride itself? You mentioned it comes from China, you know, they're, they're, they're well known as a country for uh either doctoring. Or altering uh.
Sure.
Has that issue been dealt with?
The only issue I can say to that is my test results come back to where they're supposed to be. So as far as the fluoride concentration in that bag. We're hitting our target, and we're consistently hitting our target. We don't have to adjust things all the time to compensate to get to our target range.
So the fluoride you purchased, is there an A S T M standard?
Um, I'm sure there is. The the bag's full of writing. Um, I can't honestly say that I read everything on the bag.
So it's, so it seemed to me if there's an A S T M standard, and then even though it comes from China, it's. The purity of the chemical has been met.
I'm assuming so, yes, because of the company that we're buying. We're not buying it from China. We're buying it from a chemical consortium.
Okay.
Sells chemicals to everywhere. This isn't a a black market.
Well, it's probably a global market though.
Right.
Yeah.
Has all these chemicals. Um. All, all I can say to that is that we don't have to make these big swinging adjustments. Month to month. Batch to batch, year to year. The the fluoride that we purchased in our end results is very, very consistent. So. I have to think that the chemical that we're buying is of a safe quality. Because we, if if it varied a lot, if we had to change our process month to month, six months. Every time we got a new batch of fluoride, if we had to keep changing that all the time, I would be a little concerned. But it's very, it's a very consistent uh test result that we get from that, year to year too. I mean, this isn't. We're not winging it here, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have standard, I can follow both. We have monthly reports that we have to file, annual reports we have to file. And we're in complete compliance with everything, fluoride and everything else.
Uh, I I like to, um, do do any of the members have any questions?
No.
At this time, you all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just have a closing statement.
Sure, go ahead.
That I believe it's naive to think that fluoride. Only affects your teeth and only affects oral health. When you're ingesting something with fluoride in it, it affects other parts of your body. Right? It's been shown to affect your thyroid, your kidneys, your bones. So as more information comes out, as it's studied more and more, I'm not anti-teeth, I'm not anti-oral health. I am anti-fluoride. Right. So hopefully we can work together and get this done.
Yeah.
All right, well, I uh, if that's all that you wish to say, is there anything you wish to add?
No, I've, I've gotten everything open.
Okay, I think we've had a very constructive uh discussion tonight. I I thank you both for coming in and taking the time to come in.
Yeah.
It's been very helpful and, uh, you know, I hope I open up taxpayers that out there, review the papers and uh. You know, have insight as to what we discussed tonight.
You know, I kind of view the fluoride to want to help aspect thing, um. If you want fluoride, break. You don't want fluoride, it shouldn't be forced on you.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another aspect of this, but from a, from parents. Two young children, you know, that's. Like the COVID vaccine, I'm just gonna use that as an example. If you want it, that's fantastic. You shouldn't be forced to take it.
I know.
And I kind of feel the same at mindset towards fluoride.
Shouldn't be forced to go buy Poland Springs water jugs to boil your pasta.
Right.
For your own home.
Right.
You could get an eight hundred fifty dollar. Um.
Teflon pan.
No.
Okay.
I have a filter that takes the fluoride, says ceramic and.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you put your um contact information down there? So I'm gonna contact the woman that I talked to. Oh, excellent. Very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, this time I would like to, uh.
We need to touch with you.
Yeah, I'd like to go to the, uh, you know, Mr. Castle, because he's been waiting a long time, uh, which would be Article Eight. Article Eight, Mr. Castle, are you available? Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're very welcome.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
How are you all this evening?
You're well.
Good.
Yeah, I had it so good.
Right, I I will, I will, uh, I will read Article Eight, uh, Article Eight, uh, supplemental F Y twenty six funding for cable. Department slash T C T V, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twenty two thousand dollars in no sense. I don't know to the cable department for a supplemental appropriation to its fiscal year twenty twenty six operating budget. To total and aggregate the sum of two hundred thousand, six hundred fifty dollars in no sense. And to meet said appropriation by transfer of said sum from retained earnings of the cable fund. Submitted by the cable department slash T C T V, majority vote required. Um, Mr. Castle, you have the floor.
Okay, so uh, the cable department budget, as some of you know, has a shortfall. It is a fifty three thousand dollars. And uh, we're trying to find ways to cobble that together so we can retain the services that we already provide the town. Um, we do have a seventy thousand dollar reimbursable grant. For a digital equity from mass tech and mass broadband. However, um, you should know that a few things about that. First of all, it is for work above and beyond what we're already doing. So this is like having a seventy thousand dollar client. Um, it's my job to figure out how to make it work, but another thing about this grant is it's running from September thirtieth. Last month to September thirtieth, so. last month to September thirtieth, so it's gonna overlap fiscal years, and it's also reimbursable. Uh, so we have to pay the upfront costs. We can run a deficit account, and the town accountant is setting up an account for that. However, um, because it's reimbursable at six months and twelve months, we're not gonna get the first reimbursement until April. And my plan was to front load this with with as much labor in it as possible so that we can re- get the reimbursement and be able to survive through the year. That is looking increasingly unlikely because we got a late start with this. I'm just starting to plan with it. We're really not gonna get moving on, uh, digital literacy programs with the senior center now until about January. We're gonna be three months in by the time of the first reimbursement. We may be broke by then. We may be out of money. So the, we have about twenty two thousand from what I can figure, and, um, would be in retained earnings for our enterprise fund from what we have saved from fiscal twenty five. The last BVA that I saw at the end of June did not include the last payroll. We had about thirty thousand then. I figure with the last payroll, which which also included raises for the staff that were held too long and had to be retroactive to October, you know, came to about seven thousand. There's also about another thousand in a late bill from the town for benefits. So, um, from my math, we have about twenty two thousand, one hundred and fifty three dollars. So that's why I made a twenty two thousand round figure, and we can change that on the floor if it comes down, you know, the accountant does a final BVA and we, you know, I did the math wrong or something. So that's basically the story, and, um, we're gonna need this, I think, to get through the year. We're running basically, you know, a Franken budget and trying to stitch it together. And, uh, yeah, it's a horror show, but it's my job to make it work. And I do think with the digital literacy programs that we have in mind, you know, we can figure out how to leverage it to our advantage and maybe put ourselves in the position to get more grants going forward. So a lot of an urgent matter.
People would like to ask a question.
I do. Um, Steve, I'm I'm really confused, and I'm hoping that you can enlighten me and everybody else. So I see TCTV, and then I see Montechuset television. The incubator, like, are we funding all three entities? And can you explain to me, so like, I'm I'm gonna give you an example. I saw on Facebook that you had your staff down at the Red Apple Farm doing the Brew Fest, uh, no, the Chili Cook Off. Like, did we pay for them to be there to televise that on the incubator in Montechuset Television? And I I I'm just, I think that the water's getting muddy between the three different entities.
I can, I can explain all that. Um, first of all, we started Montechuset dot TV. We started that.
Who's we? The town.
Cable Department.
So the cable department knocked down.
Department, started Montechuset dot TV. What many cable access stations do is they have a video on demand channel. You know, they pay money for a separate video server, so they can put all the shows that they have on cable TV also on a website. Well, you know, those websites are templated and they're ugly and people don't go to them. And we have a video on demand channel. It's called YouTube, and it's popular. So we decided, hey, we, my mission has been from the select board years ago to find a way to make TCTV sustainable.
Templeton Community Television, not Montechuset TV and the incubator.
Right, I'm I'm getting to that. Montechuset dot TV is meant as a potential life raft for TCTV to be able to fund it because it has infinite potential as a website. We're not gonna just do another video on demand website that maybe a hundred people can watch. We want a website that can reach tens of thousands of people, and this website is designed to, uh, eventually even be an e-commerce platform for businesses. And it was also started during COVID with a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development to enhance business resilience for local businesses. We're not interested in, you know, funding other towns with this. Certainly, you know, we'll we'll put a calendar item for thirty towns throughout the region, but the idea is to bring money into Templeton for TCTV through that. You know, we're not gonna get all the businesses Lomontister has, all the businesses Gardner has, but would we take their money in advertising? Yeah, I would, any day, because you know what? We can't make enough money in Templeton to survive. We can't. So the long-term vision for this is to have Montechuset dot TV and even possibly a business like Digital Signage, and they can work together and bundle advertising for businesses in this town and businesses in other towns to fund TCTV and even possibly create a revenue stream for the town. So that's the idea behind Montechuset dot TV. It's not to help other towns and and take our money to other towns. It's to bring money in. As far as Wachusett Business Incubator is concerned, uh, we've been working with them for several years. You will soon hopefully see a memorandum of understanding come before the select board. We need Mo- uh, Wachusett Business Incubator to help us, and they have helped us to bought us equipment. We have a place to film TCTV news and other things in Gardner right now. Personally, I think this town should be embarrassed that we're filming stuff in Gardner, and we had to film stuff in Gardner before Scott Hall came online. So you know, they, um, Magnus Carlberg at Wachusett Business Incubator has been a wonderful partner so far. We hope to go forward towards. Guess what we need for Montechuset dot TV? We need to be able to take digital payments with PayPal, and this town doesn't use PayPal. So we need a fiduciary like Wachusett Business Incubator to take that money. And, you know, we're already getting money into there, and he's helping us more than we're helping him. So don't think that, you know, we're funding Wachusett Business Incubator. They're helping us because they believe in Montechuset dot TV and what we're doing. As far as the Chili Chowder Fest, uh, or Taste Off goes, we actually didn't go there this year because we didn't have the staff to do it, and I've had to cut back that. But my plan is with the Chamber of Commerce is to sell bundled um sponsorships through them for their events. For the golf tournament, the Chili Chowder Taste Off, and there's another one or two that we would be interested in doing. And, you know, you have to get out and network with those businesses and meet people and make friends there in order to get that business. So that's what I've been working for the last few years to try to and do those partnerships. So after we do the MOU with Wachusett Business Incubator, the next step will be to do an RFP for Montechuset TV partners and then go out, but we need to have all that in place. And there's an advertising platform for the website waiting for us. But we need to get the financial stuff straightened out first, so there's a process in doing it. I hope that answers your question.
I'm actually still a little confused. It sounds as though, and please correct me if I'm wrong. So I've been looking at, you know, the numbers and trying to figure out, like, where TCTV came into this, and I'm I'm trying to honestly figure out, would it be better for the town to have a TCDT, TCTV department provide you with a budget just like every other department? Or, because it kind of sounds as though Montechuset TV is a business entity that you're trying to get up and running and rolling TCTV up underneath it. Am I correct in that statement?
Not quite, because Montechuset TV is meant to help fund TCTV. TCTV is not sustainable on its own. I'll tell you something, too. We do some video production work. I don't get any video production work out of Templeton for TCTV. I get it from Fitchburg and Lomontister.
You.
I get it from Gardner.
Montechuset TV or Templeton Community Television?
Well, the, it can be, it will be now for Montechuset dot TV, because well, how we split it up is TCTV is Templeton, and everything outside is Montechuset TV. As far as I'm concerned. No, people in Gardner don't, well, actually, people in Gardner like TCTV and they wish that they had it. Um, and some people in other towns wish that they had it, too, but, you know, Fitchburg and Lomontister don't care about Templeton TV, but maybe they'd care about Montechuset dot TV, and I think it's a worthwhile effort to try to get that going and get momentum behind it so we can earn advertising revenue for it and save TCTV's bacon and not have to rely on town funding. I'm asking for five years to get us going with it.
Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, so s- Steve, I, you know, I I've heard your, your, uh, presentations over a number of years. And a while back, I asked you, you know, don't give me a science project, tell me how much it's, how much it costs for every single meeting, ru- you know, roughly, you know, fixed in variable costs. And you came back with five hundred dollars per meeting with don't doing roughly a hundred and twenty meetings a year, which, if my math is correct, comes out to sixty thousand dollars for for what we're doing for TCTV, you know, TCTV's doing for the town, right? I'm not saying you're not doing any great work. I'm not saying the staff isn't, you you know, the staff is wonderful. Your folks are absolutely wonderful. I'm just trying to figure out how the money works because you got two hundred thousand dollars, and and if it costs five hundred dollars per meeting at a hundred and twenty, that's only sixty thousand dollars, which means it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars someplace. It, d- d- does that make sense? Because getting Montechuset TV and the incubator and everything isn't my, and and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't what TCTV was designed to do. It it was community television, not a business that just happened to be paid for by by the cable company. Am I?
Yes, and we're we're doing this to try to survive, Liz.
Well, not, well, what I'm saying is, when you already have two hundred thousand dollars, you are more than surviving.
You've got staff costs, you've got, you've got other things, and and yes, we're trying to get Montechuset TV up and running so it can help, it can help fund TCTV over time. Can't do it without spending some money and making an investment in it.
The town of Templeton is not a profit center, and that's, that's the problem. It's not a profit center, right? You happen to have a funding source that's drying up, and I I really think the decision to the town is more how, wha- what does the town want from TCTV? I don't think that the the town's looking for all of the these other things that are that are going on. I'm not saying that TCTV doesn't do great things. I think you guys do awesome things.
Absolutely.
You know, you you really support things, but it it leaves this big question about whether or not wh- what are we actually funding, right? Because a- as a, I I can only speak for myself as a taxpayer. I want all of the meetings, all the town meetings recorded. That that is a preference of mine because I can't attend to them. I want to look at them at some other point in time. And that, you know, at a hundred and twenty meetings a year, at five hundred dollars a meeting, that's sixty thousand dollars. So that's why I'm kind of going, I don't get it.
Or maybe, maybe the true cost of the meeting is more than five hundred dollars. Is five hundred dollars the true cost of the meeting, or is it some other figure?
That's what I value it as with all the work that we we put into it and the staff time and, you know, preparing previews of meetings and recaps of meetings. We're really reporting on the town and filling a news desert that the newspapers have relinquished. And we're doing it for the for the community so that people can be informed. And in in cl- addition to the meetings, we also produce, um, many of the slides, we call them, the little notices that appear on Facebook and between the programs on Channel Eight, on the cable channel, and, you know, we've run them in the past in in your room there. Um, right now, we've had to cut back on doing the reels because, you know, we we can't quite get there yet, and we're a little shorthanded. But, you know, that those notices, whether it's a dog license deadline or the things that we do in highlights of the town, uh, weekly report, I think are very valuable to the community. So, you know, we're running a news organization. I didn't intend to do this. You know, we're we're trying to fill it, fill a news desert that the newspapers have relinquished. I didn't intend to do what we had to do during COVID, but we had to switch and become, you know, the COVID channel for a while. So anyways, you know, think of what TCTV does as, you know, multi-level. And your, the Facebook posts, which some of you are familiar with, is more like the front page of the newspaper. I'll do a recap on this tomorrow morning and and get it out there, and people read that, and, you know, we're unpacking kind of complicated subjects in meetings for people and so that they can understand them. And then, okay, here's the video to watch and go to YouTube. So then your YouTube channel is your nice photographs or, in this case, video, and it's just a different way of doing the local news. And then, you know, do you want an arts and culture page? Yeah, that's what Montechuset dot TV is. But, you know, if I'm gonna have a newspaper in Templeton, I'm not gonna say, oh, forget it, we're only gonna cover arts and things in, you know, arts and events in Templeton. I go to events outside of Templeton, and I'm sure you do, too. And you may want.
Do, are you charging Templeton?
Pardon me?
But when you go to those events, are you charging Templeton?
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming out of our budget, but we're not, right now, we don't have the staff to go out to other events outside of Templeton and do that. You know, Alex Harrison, one of our employees, mans the website. He also helps us with, um, public relations and social media, and, you know, he'll go out and take some photos and that, but we don't have time to send crews out or the money right now to do that. That would be nice to be able to do that. And, you know, but like I said, we get video production work outside of Templeton. We don't get any of it inside of Templeton. And, you know, very early on, when I was sent on this mission ten years ago by the SLU board, I started talking to people in town, and uh, you know, one of the things they said was tie it to economic development. And at first I went, what? And, you know, I I'm kind of embarrassed because I'm an old newspaper guy. I worked at newspapers, and newspapers really were business platforms. Right? If you had a shop on Main Street and your sales were down, you ran a big display ad in the newspaper and ran a sale. Well, that, those days are gone, right? I mean, all that got blown to the wind. Classified advertising, too, is very important in newspapers, and that, pooh, the internet and Facebook, bam, it's gone. You know, we're not gonna rebuild that for a newspaper. But, and you know, another thing I'm looking into doing is getting news in the hands of people because not everybody has Facebook. We're talking to app developers through WBI, which is a business incubator, and Montechuset dot TV that they they want to do government-based websites to basically be a kiosk on your phone, and they're going to get all this public information and put it on a phone. And I showed them what we were doing. Their eyes practically bugged out of their heads, and and, you know, they're gonna try to do something with us. Maybe we could get in that on a beta program and have something really valuable for people who don't have Facebook and don't see the news that that we're getting out there. Some people want us to do a print, you know, newsletter or something. I don't know how we can do that. I've actually looked into small offset presses for it, but I I think that's, you know, I don't think we can do anything smaller than, I mean, bigger than, you know, a small run for that. And the idea is just to get people the information. But Montechuset dot TV was made to help support TCTV.
But ultimately, Templeton is paying for Montechuset TV on top of TCTV?
Yes. We have to. I would like to change that. It's not a perfect world. You know, it, the, our business plan is to eventually have a nonprofit that we're starting called Montechuset Digital Lab, which is an educational foundation because we do educate youths and others who want to get into media. youths and others who want to get into media. The schools aren't doing it anymore. It's up to us to do it. And we may be able to get nice grant money from uh, international trade organizations and audio video to do that. I've spoken to them about that. And, you know, I think that's of, of high value and that's being started as to, to get grants that are educational. Because TCTV alone cannot provide a lot of these grants or even be eligible for some of these grants on its own.
Again, it sounds as though you've started your own business, Montechuset TV in your rolling Templeton.
It's not my business, April. It's, the, the town owns Montechuset dot TV. It's your business.
But the town is not in the business of being in business. And, and I think that
I agree, you shouldn't be in the media business at all. In a perfect world, we should be in a 501(c)(3) because government should not be in the media business. But guess what? We can't support ourselves. And it's going to come down to local funding because the state's not doing it and the federal government has failed us on this. I'm sorry, Liz, if I interrupted you, please go.
No, can I say something?
No, go ahead, Beth.
All right. This is in the future that you're talking about. I won't be here. But I do appreciate what you have done. And you actually did me a good favor today because I needed information on one of our warrant articles. And I got, had none. So I sat down with my handy Kindle. I'm such a computer nerd. And I was looking through to see what you had for people watching meetings. I've always considered TCTV to be very important. And I think it can be more important as time goes on, especially with the newer people in town that don't even probably know about it. We have this gap in knowledge. Because capital improvement, they had two meetings. Ninety-four people watched one and 87 people watched the other. When Mr. Ryan uh, came on, 96 people watched him. The advisory committee, one of our meetings, 154 people watched it. The selectmen's meeting, 302 watched one meeting, 111 watched another. 249 people watched another. 301 watched one and 283 watched another. That's a lot of people.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yep, the zoning board of appeals of all things, 43 people watched that meeting. Templeton Preservation Commission meeting, 41 people watched that. And the Agricultural Commission meeting of September 8th, 40 people watched, 42 people watched that. So I got the information I needed by watching the meetings. And I got information on how well you're doing as far as people watching meetings. If they couldn't watch it tonight, they can watch it tomorrow morning. If they need to look back, they can find it. Those things are important. I remember when you started with, what's that kid's name? There were only two of you.
John.
Yeah, yeah, way back.
John's on the cable committee now.
Oh, good.
But what I'm saying is, we're talking about keeping them running, okay?
Our valuable asset to the
Well, they are, but the difference is there's three different entities. I understand that, but we're talking about keeping them running. If they don't have any money, they can't even provide people in this town with meetings.
All right, let, let me, let me ask this. The $22,000, is this going to be an extra expense at town meeting, at the fall town meeting? Is this going to be an extra expense to the taxpayers?
No, it's, it's coming out of our retained earnings. It's our savings.
So it's really a
We're asking for our money. That's what we're asking for. Otherwise it would, we'd have to wait till FY27. And, and you know, FY27, $22,000 is not going to save us if we don't exist.
All right, you have to go
We need the money this year.
You have to go to town meeting to ask for the money in this manner.
Yes. Yeah, and I, and I stood up at the May town meeting and I told everyone I'd be back in November if we have any savings.
Good.
Okay. All right, I, does anybody wish to say anything?
I just, I just wanted to clarify. Steve, I'm not saying that you're not valuable.
I, I know, April.
I've always supported you. I feel as though you are a huge asset to the town of Templeton.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Confused with the different levels.
Yeah, and I'm happy to discuss that at any time and I appreciate your points on it. And, um, you know, if you haven't seen it, please watch the April 27th, April. I, I keep going back to April. I'm stuck in the spring. August 27th, uh, SLU board meeting where I presented the business plan. There's a full business plan. You're welcome to read it, quiz me about it. Sit down with me, go through the budget. I'll tell you where we're getting bargains, where we're not, uh, what my issues are. And, you know, I understand the concerns about Montechuset dot TV, but it's, you know, it's intended to help us and help the town.
Okay. All right, I'd like to close it at this point. Uh, thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome. I hope that was helpful.
Yep.
Thank you. And now would like to go to article if you go to article one, would you care to read that?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll read it.
Thank you, Liz.
Um, Article One, amend the town bylaws, RE Annual Town Audit. To see if the town will amend the, the bylaws, Chapter 28, Section 8, Annual Town Audit, by making certain deletions strike through and additions bold as follows. Section 28-8, annual audit required. And the entire section is, um, struck through. I'll, I'll read it just so you know what it said. Uh, the Select Board, uh, Board shall at least annually provide for and conduct an independent audit of the financial books to be done by a reputable, reputable accounting firm not connected to or related in any way to the town or officers. The complete audit with recommendations shall be made available to the public as soon as it's received and it shall be posted in the annual town reports. And the section of the town bylaws is repealed and presented by the Select Board, majority vote required.
Thank you. Uh, I did receive this communication from Jeff Bennett, which I, uh, which was, I believe, distributed to all of our members. But I'd like to read this for the public, uh, because I think it really clarifies what Article One is all about and why this is being struck. Uh, Article One, the primary reason for this article is to end the requirement to have the annual town audit printed within the annual town report. The annual town audits are already posted to town, to the town website. This has the potential to reduce the size of the annual town report. Also, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 40, requires every city and town to perform an annual independent audit of their finances. When the original town bylaw on audits was passed in Templeton, the annual audit was not then a requirement of the law. Um, so basically, uh, my, my understanding is that Article One is, uh, and the annual audit is still required, but uh, that the, uh, requirement that it be printed in the annual town, uh, report, it will no longer be required to be printed in the annual town report, but will still appear on the town website along with the other information. And I think that this, uh, really continues a trend, uh, where the town, uh, is trying to save money uh, by, uh, going to, uh, record information by digital means without on paper. Does anybody wish to comment?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. And, uh, there's nothing further to say. I would like to go on to, uh, Article Two. And I'll, I'll read this quickly. Article Two, amend prior town meeting vote regarding open space committee. To see if the town will vote to amend Article 54 of the May 16th, 2006 annual town meeting by making certain deletions and additions as follows, uh, the composition of the committee. The open space committee shall consist of a and struck out a minimum of five and struck out at a maximum of nine members. Appointed by the Board of Selectmen is struck out and substituted would be Select Board. Members shall serve one-year terms and appointments will be made in June to start annually on July 1st. The open space committee may appoint associate members by majority vote of the committee at a monthly meeting. Associate members will hold no voting rights. All votes shall be considered pass and valid provided at least three members of the committee are present and a simple majority is attained. Open space committee duties. The open space committee shall be an advisory body and a resource to the Board of Selectmen.
Select Board.
Something was missed. They'll have to be amended. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And other town boards in carrying out the major goals outlined in the Templeton Open Space and Recreation Plan and in revising the Templeton Open Space and Recreation Plan as needed to comply with federal and Commonwealth of Massachusetts requirements and guidelines. The committee will also A, provide a list of proposed candidates for the open space committee to the Board of Selectmen. B, provide input to town boards on open space and natural resource matters. C, encourage the town to pursue state and federal programs and grants involving open space. D, work within the community to develop trails and educational programs to encourage natural resource protection and sustainable utilization. E, facilitate and slash or participate in monitoring of protected lands and conservation restrictions. F, prepare a summary of activities for the Templeton Annual Report, presented by the Select Board, majority vote required. And if I may, uh, I will also read, uh, the, uh, email from Mr. Bennett, uh, you know, for the benefit of the public about Article Two. Uh, reducing the number of members to five solves a couple of issues. First, it is easier to fill five volunteer positions than it is for nine. And second, if there were to be seven members of a committee, how can three be a simple majority and thus be in line with the open meeting law? There are currently three people wanting to be on the open space committee. So setting the committee at five, that will make it so that the committee can function. Uh, so the basic change, as I understand, is that the, uh, membership would be changed from a, uh, a maximum of nine members and, uh, consists of five members and appointed by the Select Board, uh, a change of language from the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody wish to comment?
Just A needs to be changed to Select Board also.
That would have to be done at a town meeting for
Yeah, I'm just saying that's something I think they want to do.
That's a good catch.
Amen that. That needs to be consistent throughout everything.
Yeah, that's a good catch. Anybody else wish to comment? And I will, uh, proceed to, uh, and we'll proceed at this time to Article Four, um, Article Four.
And I need to, I'm gonna step out of the room for Article Four because it is the Grange Hall and I'm a member of the Historical Society.
I understand. Thank you.
Somebody come yell for me.
Um, I'm a member of the Historical Society too.
Bye ladies.
Tell me to take a hike.
Is that what you're saying?
It's gonna be quick. Hi, honey, I just kind of roll along.
Now, April, would you care to read Article?
Article Three?
I'm sorry, Article Four, with Grange Hall.
Where are we? Right, um,
Do you have it?
Yeah, Article Four, CPA Funding for Grange Hall First Floor Kitchen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 and zero cents um, for the below mentioned project, Marigantia Historical Society, $20,000, Grange Hall Kitchen. Um, CPA fund source is historic. Provide funding to the Marigantia Historical Society to expand on CPA eligibility expenditures related to the preservation and or rehabilitation of the first floor kitchen at the historic Grange Hall, Nine Hubbardston Road, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Committee Act Historic Reserve Fund. Public benefit to include no cost to residents of Templeton to access when the building is open to the public or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, majority vote required.
Thank you. And then all, all I would add is, uh, that the, uh, the Grange Hall is an ongoing project. Uh, and that, uh, it comes from the Community Preservation Act Fund. Uh, and it was voted, uh, to do this and place it on the warrant. It was a, uh, a, uh, I believe a unanimous vote by the Community Preservation Committee. And, um, and what was the items I wanted to add for informational purposes for the public? Do you wish to comment? Either of you?
No.
No.
Okay.
We'll get them back.
Yeah, get them back. And then for the next one, uh,
We're gonna go to Article Three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Come on back ladies.
Two, three.
Liz, you, you prepared your chair?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right, Pat passing the chair for, for the moment. Yeah, yes.
You're the guy.
Oh, you're on.
So I guess I'll read Article Three. The CPA Funding for Memorial Congreg- I can't speak tonight. Congressional, no, Congregational Church exterior. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $15,500 and no cents for the below mentioned project. Uh, Memorial, uh, Congregational Church, amount of $15,500. Uh, the purpose for, for the church exterior, the CPA fund source is historic. It says, providing funds to the Memorial Congregational Church in Ballenville to expand on CPA eligible expenditures related to the preservation and or rehab- rehabilitation of the exterior of the historic building on 16 Elm Street. And to meet said appropriation by the transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act Historic Reserve Fund or take any other action hither, um, related thereto. Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, majority vote required. Okay, so, um, I I, it, it, this would be coming out of the CPA funds. It's already gone in front of CPA. They're, um, they're putting it forward. And does anyone have any questions, comments? Nope. Okay. All right, um, I guess that's it there, so.
Go get them back.
Yeah.
Can I get them?
Yes, thank you. Should I go on to Article Five?
Yes. Go on to Article Five. Someone's gonna read that.
Anybody want to volunteer or am I getting to do it?
Go ahead. You're, you're good.
You're such a nice voice.
I don't know about that. All right, Article Five, CPA Funding for the Boynton, uh, Library Historic Rehabilitation. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $60,000 and no cents for the below mentioned project. Boynton Library Director, Undesignated, Undesignated Trustees, okay. Uh, the purpose, uh, amount $60,000 for the library rehab. Uh, CPA fund source, $60,000. It says, provide funding It says provide funding to the Boynton Public Library Director and Trustees to expend on CPA eligible expenditures related to the preservation and or rehabilitation of the historic Boynton Public Library and to meet said appropriation by the transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act's Undesignated Fund or to take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee. Majority vote required. You're welcome.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I asked Jackie about this today. I was talking to her briefly and she said that the library's wiring in the original section is so old, it's the old
knob and tube.
So that is a big part of what they're gonna do. They have some flooring they need to replace. And I think it's been a long time that I don't believe.
Yep. Yep.
Badly, badly.
Yep, yep, so that's good.
You know, we should not have any knob and tube wiring whatsoever. Is there any further discussion?
No. I, I'm, I'm, can you, just for educational purposes?
Sure.
Um. How are these things coming before us from capital, well, the CPA funds? How? So the police department needs vests. Why isn't that on here?
No, it's, it's not a type of capital.
Okay.
So what, what, what you have is you have the Community Preservation Act.
Yeah.
And, you know, the state basically funds, um,
Okay.
You know, that, it's a, it's a fund. It's a fund of the town. And at times it's had as much as a million dollars in the fund. It has a quite a large amount of money. And so what you have is that you have the Community Preservation Committee. I believe it's seven members and so that any.
Different from capital ones.
Right, so any, uh, person who, um, you know, has a request, uh, they have to, they have to come up with a plan. And then they have to bring that plan, uh, you know, they have to tell the community, Community Preservation, Preservation Committee, uh, what they need for dollars and they have to be able to justify it. And they have, you know, several buckets, you know, within the Community Preservation Act, uh, you know, fund. You know, one is open space, so you'll see the next article has to do with, uh, the community garden. So it will come out of the open space bucket. And then, uh, for the, the Grange Hall or the, uh, Memorial Congregational Church, the bucket that comes out of is historical preservation. And they have a couple of other buckets, but that's, that's the idea. So the, uh, the Community Preservation Committee, you know, reviews each proposal. And if they vote in favor of it, and for all of these, uh, they were, I believe unanimous votes on all of them. They, they embedded the projects. They determined that it falls into one of the buckets and that it's proper. And then, but what has to be done is that it has to, uh, in turn be approved by a town meeting vote.
Okay.
And, uh, even though the money, it's not adding to your property taxes, it's coming out of.
It's three percent of your, three percent of the tax dollars that you, that you pay in. And it's matched. In the beginning, we had a really, really good match. We were getting, I think, you know, ninety percent or something. It's gone way, way down. So it's like, people consider it like play money almost, and it shouldn't be because it's tax money. And I don't think, I think my problem with the CPA fund is there aren't very very good guidelines for, it's like if you walk and you want it, they say, okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't like if you, they wanna do a field, make a ball field. They can make the ball field, but nobody looks ahead to see who's going to maintain the field, who's gonna pay to maintain the field. So there's, I think there's a whole lot wrong with this and the other part of it is I think that we're gonna have less and less money going into it as far as matching funds.
I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
From us, there may be less and less matching money.
Yeah.
I look at that as, uh,
Yeah.
You know, there's more matching money to kind of get, get the program.
In the beginning, we made out good, but now it's.
But, you know, having said that, uh, they, they only have a finite amount of money to spend.
I don't know. I think.
How much is in that account?
I tried to find out and I'll get some paperwork for our next meeting.
No, the money, the money has been, uh, you know, as much as a million dollars, you know, a few years ago. I think, I think there's the, the range of four to six hundred thousand dollars in the fund. But they are, it's very specific as to what the.
Yeah, their, their qualification, yeah.
Right.
But that's about as, as, as Darrow is a gift.
Right, but you got, you have to give the community, the committee some leeway as to.
Yeah, well.
You know, it's, you know, what is historical is subjective, you know, for example, or open space, it's subjective. And that's why you have the committee is to weed through the. And I, I could say, having been through the process, um, it is, uh, you know, they really, they really do watch, you know, how the money is being spent. And say, and you know, another wrinkle to this, say, say you have your twenty thousand dollar request and we'll only end up spending fifteen thousand dollars.
Goes back.
Five thousand dollars goes back.
Okay.
So, you know, there is, uh, that's. Yeah, so it's, it's not perfect like any piece of legislation, but, uh, you know, the overall intent is to try to say, uh, the, uh, historical nature of the town, uh, you know.
Some of it's opposing too.
Right, but one of the recent projects last year was the first congregational church in Templeton.
Yeah.
Which is really the landmark of the town. You know, it's really that and they, uh.
Christopher Wren.
It was almost three hundred thousand dollars appropriate out of that to, to fix the facade and, uh.
Wouldn't Scott Ball be considered?
Community preservation? I believe that's owned by the town.
No, I don't know.
It's, it's historic, but it's owned by the town.
All right, okay.
I, I, I hope, does that explain?
Yeah.
Great. Are we ready?
Yep.
Let's do it. Okay, Article Six.
Yep.
CPA Funding for Community Garden Expansion to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of five thousand nine hundred dollars and no cents for the below mentioned project as follows. Um, Templeton Agricultural Commission, five thousand nine hundred dollars, Community Garden. Coming, the funding source, open space. Provide funding to the Templeton Agricultural Commission to expand on CPA eligible expenditures related to the expansion of the community garden at the senior center and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the Templeton Community Preservation Act's Open Space Reserve Fund or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Community Preservation Committee, uh, majority vote required.
Does anybody wish to comment? Yes, Bev?
All right, I looked into this. Um, I really wish someone was here to ask, answer some questions. So I did look at TCTV and I watched a couple of their meetings to find out what they were talking about, a garden. Garden in the ground, raised beds. Well, I have experience at the senior center. Bart and I had given them plants quite a few years. And it didn't work out real well. That was the senior center running it. Uh, at one point, there was one lady that would come once a week to take care of it. And then one year, people were fighting about it. That didn't work out too well. There's a, a number of issues. Number one issue is the fact that our environment is changing. You can't plant anything early anymore longer. We used to plant by Memorial Day. That does not fly. It's too cold. Plants cost a lot of money. I am, I don't, it doesn't tell you what this, what this money is going for. There's no plan. They talked about eight, eight beds, um, two feet deep, eight feet long and ten feet wide. But there, and then they talked about dirt and fertilizer and putting stones between them. But it's a little loose as to who's gonna do this. And then there was some talk about, well, maybe they'd have activities that have kids up on the weekends and all this. Um, number one, a garden is a lot of work. You can't not take care of it. We, we irrigated our garden two hours a day, almost every day this summer, toward, especially toward the end. It was so dry. So I asked, I asked Jackie, I said, do you know what they plant on for water? She said, well, they talked about rain barrels. Well, you know, that ain't gonna work. And the only other water would be the senior center. So if you have eight foot long and ten feet wide, you can't stand there for two and a half minutes. That's gonna run up the water bill of the senior center, which isn't acceptable.
And if there's sewer there, it would raise the sewer as well.
So, yeah, so, so that doesn't make any sense. There's like no plan. So there's apparently a couple of townspeople that wanna do this. Well, along with this discussion also came the discussion at one of their meetings about nobody wanting to do a farm, buy stuff at a farmer's market. Most people have their own gardens. But the other side of that is the elderly aren't doing it anymore because they can't, they, they can't and it's too expensive. We paid eighty-three, eighty-six cents for a seed, one seed for a yellow grape tomato. Seeds are astronomical. If you plant a garden and you're gone for three days, so is a garden. You can't do that. It just, I, I think they need to, if they're gonna, they wanna do this, they need to go and come up with a plan that makes sense. Because it was like they picked this, this, this price out of the sky. I don't see, there's too many unanswered questions.
It seems like a hobby.
And I don't even know how many people are gonna take, take part in it, neither do they.
It just.
You know, it's just.
What I, what I know about it is.
Okay, let's hear it.
The, the land itself is, uh, it is, uh, away from the senior center towards.
I know where it is.
The land almost, uh, blocks the cemetery.
No, it isn't. It's not, it's not that far away.
I saw gardens there. Yeah.
Well, so, so, uh, probably, uh, I don't know, eight to ten years ago, uh, Community Garden was created. It was, it was roughly a hundred and twenty, hundred to a hundred and twenty uh, feet. It was a square or rectangle, about that size. And, uh, there were, there were ten different, um, divided into ten foot by ten foot, uh, sections. And the idea was, uh, that you'd have, uh, you know, at least ten, uh, different families grow a garden in the lot. Uh, what ended up happening, happening was, uh, you're right, you know, that was correct in that, uh, it was, uh, you know, most of the families, you know, stopped by once or twice a week. Uh, there was a Mr. Lancy, uh, who lived there.
Okay.
Uh, he was, he was in a wheelchair. He was elderly. He lived, um, in the projects nearby. And he, uh, would go out in his wheelchair every day.
Yeah.
And would tenderly take care of the garden and, uh, he, he really made it work. Unfortunately, uh, he died and, uh, the community garden at that time, I believe, kind of died with him. Uh, the, I don't know, I, I think that what is needed is, and I do agree with Bev, is that there needs to be somebody, uh, and I would hope a, a town meeting would be Jessica Kate. Uh, you know, she's a full-time, uh, you know, support person.
Oh, no, no, no. Senior Center is not gonna have nothing, nothing to do with us.
No, I'm talking about Jessica Case.
Who's she?
With the Community Preservation. She, she supports the Community, uh, you know, Preservation Committee. And I, I would hope that she could speak at, at the town meeting and, and be more, and, and address the specific questions.
Does it just, you, you know how much food you could buy down at the valley with five thousand dollars? Oh, my Lord. You can't, my husband looked at me and said, Betty, it's a waste of time. It's a waste of money. Because it is just too hard to grow. It is too hard to grow.
But what, you know, the, the problem, you know, with, it may very well cost five thousand dollars to set it up because, you know, one, one of the issues, and you, you raised this, is, uh, you know, some communities' gardens I've seen, you know, throughout the state, they have, it's a bureaucracy. It's very specific rules of usage.
They have to be because people steal.
So that, so that's an issue and also fencing, uh, you know, that was one of the problems.
Don't do that. Put a fence.
You know, Mr. Lancy, yeah, that, that was not adding fencing and the animals that in, you know. I, I imagine, you know, maybe a large part of the cost is due to fencing. But I think, um, you know, was, uh, on the I Love Lucy show, I think, I think Jessica's got some slanging to do, you know, you know, about, uh, you know, where the five tops divide.
Because it just, it really and truly, it just costs so much. This year, we had sixty tomato plants. And Bart spent two hours a day or sometimes every other day watering, letting drip irrigation because it was so dry.
Well, I think, I think the argument.
Then we did not get the, as many big tomatoes as we usually did. And we supplied every department in the town with tomatoes, the senior center. I could see and if this doesn't work, who's gonna clean up the mess?
No, those are all legitimate questions. I think, I think it could very well be, you know, five thousand dollars for fertilizer, seeds, fencing and administration of some kind.
They, no, no, they gotta make the boxes too.
David, are there any more, any more comments?
That's my idea.
All right. Hour is getting late and it, the hour is getting late.
Yeah.
All in right along.
Time to do a roll call vote.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I can't remember which document I read it in, but when, when we vote in, in the voters', um, thing is also supposed to be kind of like a, a sentence or two ex- explanation, if I can get the word out right, of, uh, why we voted a certain way, not just.
For each person?
No, 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 the joint.
How are we gonna do that?
We, we've just done the last several ones. Just a blurb at the bottom where the advisory committee recommends either passage or recommend or not recommend. And then if there's a split vote, you know, you might wanna have a little.
Rationale behind it, but it was all together.
Yeah, the majority says this, the minority says that.
And then, and I do believe we've had residents ask, well, who, like, why was there no vote? Was there one no vote and at the time?
Usually, usually the two members on either side of advisory will get up and say, well, I voted no because of this, or I voted yes because of this and.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, I, I don't really want to make it too complicated because we had to move the meeting back two days.
Time. They'd be there for a week.
You got, you got Friday, Friday, uh, you know, the town is off, Saturday, Sunday's a weekend. And Monday, Tuesday are holidays.
Hope so. Just Tuesday.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah. Okay, are we, are we ready to do a roll call vote? Are you ready?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just gonna read a synopsis of it so we know what we're voting on. I know there's only ten, but.
I don't know. I think you could read Article One.
Okay, Article One, uh, to amend the town, uh, bylaws regarding the annual town audit. Uh, Bev?
Yes, yes.
April?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Article Two, amend the, uh, prior town meeting vote regarding the open space committee. Bev?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes.
We don't have to go through a motion in a second and all that.
No.
Yeah, no. Okay, Article Three, uh, CPA Funding for Memorial Congregational Church Exterior, uh, Bev?
Yes, 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 yes.
And I abstain. And Article Four, CPA Funding for the Grange Hall First Floor Kitchen, uh, Bev?
Abstain.
April?
Abstain.
Exactly.
Yes.
I vote yes. Article Number Five, CPA Funding for the Boynton Library Historic Rehabilitation, Article Five, Bev?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I also vote yes. Article Number Six, CPA Funding for the Community Garden Expansion, Bev?
Nope.
No.
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 Can we just add a comment on that? No, we, we'd like to see a plan first.
Yep, yep.
We, we can raise that at the meeting.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll raise that, we'll raise that at the meeting. I think we're all in accord on it, that's why we voted no. All right, uh, Article Number Seven, uh, Article Number Seven, the Narragansett Roof Repair Debt Exclusion, Bev?
Yes.
April?
No, and again, I, I, I wanna see a reasonable agreement before I vote anything for the school.
Yeah, that's a no. Okay, Liz?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I also vote yes. And again, you know, like the other article, we can stand up, you know, for against.
Yeah.
Okay, Article Number Eight, uh, Supplemental FY twenty-six Funding for the Cable Department, Department, uh, slash TCTV, Bev?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I also vote yes.
Okay.
Article, uh, Number Nine and Ten, uh, there's a, citizen petitions, we do not take a position on it. Uh, at this time, I will, uh, entertain a motion to.
Thank you.
Close the pretown meeting, I have a.
I move, I'm some of. Close, close pre-t廷.
Okay, uh. I also vote yes. Thank you. Um, the pre-town meeting section is now closed, uh, at this time. Does any member have comments? You have any comments?
Good meeting.
Okay, April?
Um, the only comment that I, again, wanna stress is the fact, my questioning about TC's TV. Is not that the fact that I don't support them, it's the multiple different bases and entities that I'm hearing time and time again. And clarification on the funding. That is it.
Liz?
I have the same comment that April has. I'm just, it's confusing. Town doesn't need to be in the business of. Town's not in the business of being in business, so, thank you.
Um, my only comment is that I hope the, um, townspeople understand the, everything that we discussed today. And the seriousness, especially for the school roof. Um, I do, I do see that as a big issue. That, you know, we have the opportunity here to get fifty-nine percent back and if we don't do this. You can bet your bottom dollar it'll be even less than that, if any at all, percentage back, so.
Freak without the bone.
I think that that's something that people really need to understand and be prepared to, um, vote yes on. And when they come to the ballot, to also support this for, for our town finances.
Very well said.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I have no further comments at this time except to, uh, thank my fellow members for agreeing to move the meeting back. A couple of days, that was very, very helpful. And, uh, also, I do appreciate, uh. Uh, my fellow members for the, uh, excellent discussions that we had tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so moved. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.